Call the meeting in order. The Wilmington City Council like to welcome all those who are with us here this evening, all those who take an interest, thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I'd like to call and introduce Sergeant Ron Evans of the Wilmington Police Department. If you'll come forward and please give us our invocation, if everyone will stand or remain standing afterwards for Pledge of Allegiance. Sergeant Evans?
Good evening. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything that you have done in our lives, everything that you're doing and everything that you're going to do. We ask for your protection this evening. We ask that you cradle us in your arms, hold us close to your bosom, protect us from the seen and the unseen. Father, tonight, we ask that you give this council and their staff wisdom, and they make the preparations to make major decisions for the citizens of Wilmington. And Father, also, tonight, we ask that you allow us to keep in our prayers and remember our friends to the South, men, women, children, firefighters, first responders, as there are battling wildfires in North and South Carolina. We thank you for this prayer, and we pray in your son's precious name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice sprawn. We have two presentations this evening. Our first presentation is for Ms. Sheila Evans, who is the chairperson of the Wilmington New Hanover County Commission for Women and proclamation naming March 2025 as Women's History Month. Carolina, of every race, class, and ethnic background, have enriched our city with historic contributions that have strengthened our community in both celebrated and unsung ways; and whereas the women of Wilmington have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every facet of city life by forming a significant part of our workforce, both in the home and in the public sphere; and whereas the women of Wilmington have provided the backbone of volunteer service that sustains our community, institutions, and nurtures our civic life; and whereas the women of Wilmington were instrumental in establishing early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions that have shaped the identity and future of our city; and whereas the women of Wilmington, diverse in their heritage, experiences, and perspectives, have been trailblazing leaders in progressive movements for social change that continue to inspire a more inclusive and equitable community; and whereas the women of Wilmington have not only championed their own rights to suffrage and equal opportunity, but have also led efforts and movements aimed at creating a fair and just society for every citizen; and whereas despite these monumental contributions, the achievements of the women of Wilmington have too often been overlooked and undervalued in the study and teaching of our local history. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wilmington, North Carolina, that March be designated as Women's History Month for the city of Wilmington, and calling upon the residents of Wilmington to observe the month of March with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor and celebrate the enduring legacy and continued contributions of the women who shape our community. And I just want to say thank you to the committee and the commission for such an outstanding job. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Next presentation, I would like to recognize Mr. David Ingram, our Sustainability Manager, and Mr. Richard Smith, who is the chairman of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee. They're going to be talking to us about our Clean Energy Advisory Committee Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Proten, City Council members. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you tonight to present the our Clean Energy Advisory Committee's annual report. Would certainly like to thank all of our committee members. Our seven-person committee right now is very hardworking, very dedicated to the tasks that they've been presented, and I'll present a few words tonight and then hand it over to our chairperson, Richard Smith, to present the entire report. So just a little background, the mayor and council adopted the resolution to form the Clean Energy Advisory Committee back in 2021, as well as adopting our clean energy goals. Our staff, our committee members are made up of diverse staff members, and their goal and task is to provide recommendations to city staff that we bring back in front of the city council. And those goals, again, it's 50% clean energy by 2035, as well as transitioning our fleet of vehicles over to EV or hybrid, as technology allows, and further goals on out to 2050 to bring us 100% clean municipal energy for our operations, as well as, you know, working within our community on collaborative goals that we can provide opportunities community-wide, you know, beyond just our own city operations. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our committee chairperson, Richard Smith, who'll go over the details of the report with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. So, over the course of 2024, the committee undertook a number of sustainability-focused areas for this year, including energy efficiency of the municipal facilities, the beginning of the fleet EV transition over to low-emission, zero-emission vehicles, sustainability policy for new construction and retrofits on municipal buildings, focusing on clean energy policy and legislation, and then as well as the EV charging infrastructure for municipal facilities. So, there were five different initiatives that we undertook over the course of the year. Those included energy efficiency initiatives, including building equipment repairs and upgrades to both police headquarters and the fire headquarters, LED lighting retrofits at the parks and wrecks facilities, and that resulted in a reduce reduction in the aggregate energy usage intensity across city facilities. For those of you that might not know, EUI is a way to measure energy usage per square footage across facilities. So it eliminates, you know, a higher bill for a larger facility versus a lower bill for a smaller facility. It gives you a comparison, an even comparison across the board for your entire portfolio. We worked on a recommendation for a fleet EV transition study. This should help, in addition to looking at EV options, it should also help the city staff determine the size of the fleet that's needed, whether we need to add or subtract vehicles to the fleet to efficiently carry out city operations. In addition to that, the city staff also are participating in the Piedmont and Coastal NC Green Communities Coalition. That is a new initiative that they're excited to be partaking in. And then, back in December, the city council adopted a sustainable municipal building policy that we helped to recommend the structure for. So I applaud you for your decision to adopt that policy. Additionally, we made recommendations to city staff for the 2024 state and federal legislation agenda for clean energy goals that we'd like to advocate for at the state and federal level. And then, the, there were also, we were consulted and made recommendations on the EV parking requirements, updates made to the building code for those, and the introduction of the C-PACE program, which city council will be considering later tonight. And then, finally, the EV charging infrastructure within the city, looking at Level 2 EV chargers, both at the convention center and at the Public Works Center. So, our focus for 2025, continuing with energy efficiency. You know, obviously, we have the Skyline Facility now. It's a large facility. It's new to staff. So we'll be looking to look for any opportunities that there are for energy efficiency there. With it being such a large facility, previously commercial, there will be opportunities to optimize the efficiency there. We'll also be looking at what grant opportunities and what funding opportunities there are to offset the costs for any of those energy efficiency programs, and then also offsets for solar on any of the new facilities that are being built. There's a, again, tonight, we'll be considering an award for a grant for a fleet transition study contract. That is something that we've been working on for the past, let's say, 18 months. We're really hoping to get across the finish line tonight, that I kind of discussed a little bit earlier. And then, also, we're looking to expand the EV pilot project. Currently, there are two Nissan Leafs at the Public Works Facility that are the first EV, 100% EV vehicles in the city fleet. So we're looking to expand that project. As far as policy and legislation, continue to advocate for supportive legislation towards clean energy goals, pursue Soul Smart Silver accreditation, if not gold. And then, communication is going to be a big focus in 2025, both with the internal stakeholders within the city. City staff is a big focus, and also the external community, making sure that we're effectively communicating all the different things that the city of Wilmington is doing to achieve these clean energy goals. And then, also utilizing the Wilmington Current Newsletter. Unless there are any questions, thank you for your time. Anything? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Do you have other members of your committee here? And if so, could we recognize them? Thank you. Just wanted to acknowledge the folks who are here, and then also ask, because we're also live streaming, do you have vacancies on your committee, and are you looking for other members?
We are. We do have two current vacancies, so you are more than welcome. We would encourage anyone that's interested to submit an application to the city clerk for approval and consideration.
Okay. Just wanted to say thank you for the work that you do, and I really want to encourage your committee to continue to push us as a council to make some of these changes and to increase our pace. Thank you for your work.
Yes, sir. We have a couple of questions here, Ms. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I noticed you mentioned the slide just before this about pursuing the silver soul star.
Yeah.
You kind of seem like you hesitated a little bit, because you said you really want gold. How far are we from gold?
It's not so much, it's not so much a hesitancy. It's a fact that it's just a, for the Soul Smart program, we have to coordinate with the New Hanover County Commissioner's Office. They, the county is responsible for some of the permitting that's required, and the silver to gold requirements require shortening the length of permitting time that it takes to issue solar installation permits.
Okay.
And so, it's just, part of that is also dependent on us, on our cooperation and our work with the county government.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Joadeau?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and for the volunteer work that you do on behalf of the city.
My pleasure.
2025 focus areas, just one, just a little question, clarification on what this project is, but it says expanding the EV pilot project. Can you expand on that just a bit?
Yeah, so, right now, as I mentioned earlier, tonight, you'll be considering a, an award from the EECBG, it's the Energy Efficiency Block Community Block Grant, for a fleet transition study. As you saw in the goals that were established for this committee, part of that is transitioning to clean, low-emission, no-emission vehicles. So, the most efficient, we felt that the most efficient way to begin that is with a transition study that would determine the size and the best method to transition the fleet to EV vehicles. Part of that is a pilot program to get the city staff exposure and experience with those EV vehicles. So, the two Nissan Leafs that were purchased, those are the first two, and they're being utilized by city staff, and we'd like to see that program expanded to different departments within city operations, so that they can, you know, all the different facets of the fleet can utilize and start to interact with these EV vehicles to get a better, you know, better understanding and better experience with them.
Interesting. Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Smith. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Brings us to our next item of business, which is our Senate General Items, 1 through 3. Are there any items, any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of council? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't pass this unanimously. Next item of business, our public information segment. We have five speakers that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. The city clerk will be keeping the time, so when you hear the buzzer go off, you know your time is up. I would also ask you that on these microphones, if you'll speak directly into them, they are adjustable, so you can pull them up or down, so we can hear you clearly. So, our first speaker this evening is Ms. Cynthia Cryer, who is talking to us about code enforcement. Good evening.
Hi. I live at the Arboretum West Apartments at Tribute Properties, and we had HVAC issues from them not cleaning them, not changing filters on the regular, and the people above me lost their pipe, the main pipe, and dropped gallons and gallons of water all over my ceiling, all over my floor, through like three different rooms. I reported it to them, and they said they were going to remediate and did not remediate. So, my apartment was infected with Aspergillus penicillum mold and corallipolis mold that was four to five times the legal limit as well. So, I'm going to go through these things and just show you some of the pictures. But also, we had water issues where I believe, I don't know if there was a crushed water line or what, but it's bringing in black sludge, our drinking water off all of our faucets, on the clothes, every bed of clothes coming out of the wash machine has this black stuff on it, and a commercial builder actually took it off the wall and said, it's coming in off the water line. So, it couldn't be fixed by fixing the west machine. Besides that, the water leaking brought German cockroaches, centipedes, spiders. I'm just going to go through these, this mold growing on boards. They also put a bracket over my secondary line on the HVAC, caused it to fail, and I was gone for almost a month, and my apartment was over 80 degrees the entire time, so the mold circulated all over my apartment. Mold on my plants. I mean, I had probably 50 orchids. The mold infected my orchids, which I've never seen this before. This is the bracket that they made and put over the secondary line to keep it from kicking off, and it actually shut off for three and a half weeks. And they put plumber's putty around that. Wilmington Heating and Cooling found that when they came out to inspect it. More mold on my containers, mold on boards. This is my Brito coffee pot that I had just done the vinegar run through a week prior that had, was, I was drinking it full of mold. This is a picture of the maintenance guy in the process of fixing the mold, which was three weeks after the original water leak. And also, the leak was like 12 feet away from where they repaired. They came in my bathroom where the water ran out and painted the ceiling. That's what they did to fix, and refused to pull the ceiling down or get to the mold that was up there. Mold around the vents, mold on just different items. That's a soap container that was in the bathroom. This is the filter to the upstairs apartment. When I went up there to help her clean up the water and figure out where the water was coming from, that's how filthy her filter was. So, they're not doing any kind of regular maintenance on their filters. That's a doctor's note where my doctor, immediate evacuation from the mold, because it was causing me to be so sick. I actually had 13 ER visits to urgent care, where my blood pressure was crazy. I couldn't breathe. Vomiting, vomiting. Here's another. This is the plumbing coming in on the floor in one of the closets to the outside wall that's bringing all the bugs right on in. I turned all this into code enforcement. He told me to get a lawyer, go down to the courthouse, to the recorder of deeds, find out who this property was recorded through, and go to legal aid. That's, that was his suggestion for how code enforcement would deal with all this. This is the Wilmington Heating and Cooling that shows that they found the jerry-rigged little system that they did, and he said in 30 years, he'd never seen anybody do this type of thing to their HVAC. That's, the maintenance supervisor was proud of what he did and drew up the diagram of how he made that piece to cover up the secondary line and plumb the whole thing closed. This is about a month after they supposedly fixed it, where it started leaking again, and dropping the ceiling in here and in the hallway, German cockroaches, centipedes. I mean, we're talking like a one-bedroom apartment. I'd come out, and there'd be seven, eight cockroaches, spiders. I mean, it's like a plague. This is clothes, how it would come out of the wash machine with that black sludge stuff on it, the underneath of the toilet tank with all that sludgy stuff. And then, there's a ton of Dr. Bills, just where they would test for everything from COVID to, I don't know, whatever all the viruses are, they'd all be negative, and they'd say it's environment. Blood pressure, ridiculous blood pressure, and that's how they told me there was no mold. They put that little, that's not a mold reader, that's a water reader, I guess, on the wall to show me that there was nothing. How do we get down past here, honey? Over to this, yeah, yeah, yeah. That one's good. Oh, that's, well, that's my, the water tank to show them all the mold on there.
Ma'am, could you wrap this up in about a minute, because your time is up?
Say that again?
Your time is up. The time, your time, your time is up.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We'll just wrap it up, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted you guys to see what's going on in your city. I mean, I did everything to report this to everybody you could report it to, including the corporate office. I called Department of Insurance. I filed a claim with my insurance. They turned it into Department of Justice. They turned it into the Real Estate Board. And it's like, nobody's going to do anything, and they're allowed? This can't be minimum housing standard. There's just no way. So, I just want to see what the council's take on all this is.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Before we get to the other speakers, there was one item, item number three. It's a very special evening this evening. There's a resolution that was authorizing the city manager to retire the police K-9 officer, Jacko, and to transfer Officer Jacko to the police corporal David Garius. And Tony, is the officer here? There he is. Well, we want to thank him for his public service. I know he did a tremendous job for our community over the years, and he's been a great dog for our community and for the city of Wilmington Police Department, and we just want to say thank you. Thank you. And I hope he enjoys his retirement. He doesn't want to come to work? Or he still wants to come to work? He looks like he's very enjoying it, too. He's like the spotlight. I think he ought to turn him around so everybody could see him, so we can give him a big hand, everybody. Enjoy. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Michael O'Leary, who'll be speaking to us about the Brooklyn Arts Festival. Mr. O'Leary?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael O'Leary. My fiancee and I moved to the Brooklyn Arts Section in September 2024. We were never notified about the Brooklyn Arts Festival, nor was anyone in my building. We found out by accident on a Google search the day before the event. Again, there was no notification. My fiancee has early-stage Parkinson's, and the loud crowds have made it impossible for her to rest on Saturdays. I'm an alcoholic in recovery, so listening to drunk, obnoxious people all day is untenable. In life, I have a choice to leave a party like that, but that's not the case now, folks. This party is in my living room, literally. So, the past two Saturdays of the Brooklyn Arts Festival, I left my home at noon, only to return later that night to find nowhere to park. The party, as an alcoholic in recovery, folks, the party does not end at 5:00. It starts at 5:00. It goes all afternoon and into the night, drunk, loud, obnoxious people. I witnessed a multitude of alcoholic, not alcoholic, drunk people getting into the cars and leaving. The Brooklyn Arts Section is not a walking destination. This is a driving destination. People drive there. They drink all day, and they go home drunk. I'm not naive. I think I'm going to lose this battle, so I'd rather speak this evening on the existential threat that normalizing alcohol has come to our culture. I want to advocate for the marginalized and disenfranchised members of our community. According to North Carolina Department of Transportation, North Carolina is consistently one of the deadliest states for drunk driving. This past year, North Carolina ranked third in alcohol-related fatalities in the United States for DUIs per 1,000. In 2023, there were 345 fatal accidents, 12,146 alcohol-related crashes, 8,480 injuries in total. Let's talk about alcohol for a tool of economic development, because I think that's what this is all about. According to the North Carolina Center of Disease, the cost of alcohol abuse in 2024 in the state of North Carolina is $10 billion in lost revenue, lost productivity, healthcare costs, and our criminal justice system. Is allowing sanctioned prolonged drinking of alcohol really good for our local economy? Just because we don't see it doesn't mean something bad isn't happening somewhere. I'm not advocating for prohibition, just common sense. I have been to multitude of inpatient facilities in Wilmington, busting at the seams of young people desperately trying to get sober. I went to the healing place. There was at least 800 to 1,000 young people, standing room only, desperately trying to get sober. What message are those red cups sending to those young people when they get out of rehab? So what is the context of the Brooklyn Arts Festival? People can drink for five hours out of 16-ounce red cups, which is the go-to for every fraternity house in this country. The average woman who weighs 120 pounds that consumes two 12-ounce drinks in one hour is legally drunk with a zero-point level by most metrics. Secondly, each establishment only allows two drinks? Who realistically can monitor this? The bartenders? I can tell you, folks, I spoke to the bartenders. They do not like being the gatekeepers for patrons' alcohol consumption. So then, there's a question of legality. Who's legally responsible if someone is killed or injured from a DUI incident after they leave the Brooklyn Arts Festival? Under North Carolina law, the drum shot law dictates it could be the last bar he or she drinks after they've been drinking all day. Is this great for business? Again, all pressure back on the bartender for that governance. Finally, it's incredibly curious that there are no studies about DUIs as they relate to social distancing in North Carolina Central was established in 2021. However, in fact, in the entire United States, there's been no studies about DUIs. But I found a study in Europe, an estimated 6.5 million people, 10 festivals in the UK every summer. A recent study found from temporary car insurance, day insurer, found that 19% of festival goers have knowingly gone home drunk in their car. The laws of physics of this program dictate that some poor family is going to get a phone call. call. It's not going to be good. This is not a business choice. This is a moral dilemma. Just because everyone else is doing this in North Carolina does not mean it's right. I've lost five people in alcohol-related fatalities. I'm an alcoholic in recovery, so I speak in this in a way perhaps you haven't heard from me before. So I appeal to you, why not lead rather than to be led? I appreciate you, the opportunity to voice my concern.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Alex White, who'll be speaking to us about the Brooklyn Arts Social District.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Pro Tem, mayor, thank you for having me. Tough act to follow there with my stance here, but I am a business owner on Fourth Street. I own Pizzeria Don Luca at 1215 North Fourth Street. Just want to thank you sincerely for allowing this pilot program to go on. From my perspective, it couldn't, it couldn't have gone any better. I am sympathetic to his, to his situation with parking, and I think if this does become a more permanent fixture, that that does need to be addressed. My business, I've owned for two and a half years. The previous owner owned it for one and a half years before me. I have all those financials. I do not sell alcohol. I know there were some comments about, about whether or not the businesses not serving alcohol would have any business. Pretty proud to report the three Saturdays that we had this were the three busiest days in my pizza shop's history. The first was the busiest ever at the time. We doubled our sales from the 2024 coffee crawl. We sold out of pizza by 6:00 PM. I started that day with more pizza doughs than I'd ever had and had pizza doughs for Sunday. Ended up staying until about 5:00 in the morning making pizza dough for Sunday. We ended up selling a pizza, and I don't know if you've ever been there, but my pizza shop's about the size of the bathroom out there. And it was pretty miraculous. We were able to sell and put out one pizza every 90 seconds that day. The second Saturday was a little bit worse weather. Ended up just behind that, that first Saturday was the second busiest day we'd ever had. And then the third rolled around and passed them both and was the busiest day in my pizza shop's history. As a struggling business owner who, who wants to put murals on the wall to bolster our, you know, our neighborhood, make it, make it an attraction people want to come to, this goes a long way to doing that. The three social district Saturdays surpassed February 2024 sales in totality. The second Saturday was the worst of the three and was still two times better than any other day in sales of February. I, unlike the gentleman who just spoke, had zero negative interactions that day or any of the days with, with anybody. It was families with wagons and kids being pulled around. It was people with dogs. It was couples in their 70s. It was not a spring break type vibe. My employees' morale is at an all-time high. The first one, we got our butts kicked, I'm not going to lie. But the second one, the boys showed up at 7:00 AM like it was Christmas morning, and they were fired up. Their tips were, were over-doubled, almost tripled on the first and third Saturdays. So, you know, guys, guys that live in the neighborhood, Swan Street, Brunswick Street, that struggle to pay rent, you know, sometimes in the off-season, this, this really went a long way to, to helping them. We've also since, since this happened, we had, you know, we had folks coming the following Saturdays and, oh, are y'all not doing that today? But we have, we've gained quite a few new regulars that have come, and they're coming over from Leland, Brunswick Forest, Hampstead, that have been there two, three, four times since this has gone on. So this is not just a Saturday from noon to 5:00 benefit for our businesses. This, this puts the Brooklyn Arts District on the map. And, and again, I would like to reiterate, I would love to, to, you know, work as a neighborhood to figure out how we can solve this parking issue for the residents because we, we care deeply about our neighborhood. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Elizabeth O'Donnell, who's a resident affected by the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge replacement. Ms. O'Donnell?
Way down. Okay. Good evening, council members, friends, and neighbors. My name is Elizabeth O'Donnell, and I am here tonight to implore you not to vote in the favor of the proposed 135-foot option bridge, which will destroy my historic home, single-family home, and my neighborhood. Just to make a little laugh in there, I just painted it. I'd like to keep it. I am in favor of a new bridge. I understand the need for future expansion and improved infrastructure. What I cannot understand is having to make the bridge so much higher for a few sailboats, which can easily be relocated versus homes which cannot. The recent comments I have read by Natalie English and others portray a future where cargo ships make their way upriver. However, those paint an incomplete or ill-conceived picture. The smallest industrial vessel requires a draft of at least 30 feet, with the larger ones going over 50 feet. The deepest part of the Cape Fear River now is directly under the bridge at 39 feet and grows more shallow as you travel north upriver. The depth of water and lack of turnarounds are far more restrictive to large vessels than any height determination of the proposed bridge. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has stated they do not intend to dredge the river north of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. So my question is, who exactly are we trying to accommodate upriver? I'm here to support the 100-foot option. Please let us be sure to exhaust each and every alternative before demolishing a wonderful historic home in downtown Wilmington. My home at 711 South Second Street was built in 1891 by Ferdinand Cranky, a Prussian immigrant and his wife Clara Etta, a local Southern belle. They purchased the property, designed what is now my home, and passed it on to their children for several generations. Ferdinand Cranky happened to be a merchant tailor with a shop at 113 Princess Street. I've owned several homes in my lifetime, but I just never have loved one like this My home is in the path of the 135-foot replacement bridge. The thought of moving it has crossed my mind, but doesn't seem realistic. My house is lovely. It's an L-shaped cherry, cheery yellow home with a red roof and a large wraparound porch with the original balusters on a very large plot. If you glance to your left while entering the bridge from the entrance ramp off South Front Street, you can spot this beauty, and you'll see my two Great Danes running around the front porch. They watch over the neighborhood. They look at all the beautiful homes in this area. I've spent years restoring my home, giving it strong bones to withstand many years to come. I've kept its original charm, researched its history, and most of all, given it my heart. It's our home. In addition, the 135-foot bridge, ending at Fifth Avenue and crossing over Third, the entrance ramp from South Front will extend through the 700 block of South Second Street and the 200 block of Queen Street, taking all those historic homes. This is a beautiful historic neighborhood filled with friendly neighbors. They're here. Who have all, sorry, who have all invested much time, money, and love into our homes. And I can witness from my front porch how often that bridge opens, and it has declined considerably since the departure of the U.S. Coast Guard and the closing of Kinder Morgan. Reports showed last year it was raised approximately 67 times for sailboats and vessels. I live, work, and play downtown. My, my heart belongs here. I love my neighborhood and would not want to live anywhere else. I've been sickened for the past year learning of this. I walk down South Second Street daily to my job at Momentum Companies, owned by Terri Espy. I'm a member of Historic Wilmington Foundation, residents of Old Wilmington, Castle Street Collective, and I am on the board of the Downtown Business Alliance, who advocates the needs of the downtown businesses. I actually thought the Chamber of Commerce was an advocate for small businesses as well, but apparently they're not. In closing, I once again ask the council, please do not devastate the south side of South Second Street again. We took that hit the first time when the first bridge went up. That street went through. There were houses there. They're gone. My house made it. I was lucky that time. I'd like to be lucky again. I would like to ask everyone to stand with me in support of preserving our historic neighborhood by advocating for the 100-foot bridge. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ms. Elizabeth Wright, who will also be speaking to us about the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge Replacement Historical District impact.
Thank you all for having us. Really appreciate it. Personally, live on the 500 block of South Second and met Lizzie when my kids would tricycle down her hill. That's where we do the hopscotch, and we recently went sledding. So that's my personal attachment. I'm a block and a half from what we call the kill zone, the raising zone. There are six children just on my little stretch of South Second, and the old man is nine. He's here. We've got a three-week-old, just six kids. Can you believe that? You know, I've been living downtown since 1986, and the thought of having that kind of kid density is something we've been dreaming of. Well, it's here. But I'm here because I really think the 100-foot option is financially responsible, and I think the city has done a lot of this work already. So last January, you unanimously voted no tolls, and you asked DOT to find a way to do this bridge, which we all need, without the tolls. So I think the fiscally responsible thing to do would be not to go with 135 feet. That's two blocks of construction. And you know what's really expensive is taking these beautiful historic homes. The city's also done some great work with Aubrey Parsley's rail realignment report from 2021 about how that used by large vessels north of the bridge has really taint. And I've been watching those big boats since 1986, and it was a big event, and we'd run and we'd look, and it'd take your whole frame of vision. They, they don't do that anymore, and I think that the data supports that that has really dropped, so that's not our reality. Tolls. So I'm pro-business. Leland's not going to come over here. The working people are not going to come over here. It's a tax on everybody. It's bad for business, okay? So 135-foot bridge is going to cost so much more. I also think 135-foot is a threat to our federal funding. So we have $242 million. It's not in the bank, but it is allocated. That is a win for our community. So 100-foot bridge, I think, is not only much less expensive, it's a lot easier to approve. So I understand that federal money has to have some performance obligations. So by the end of next year, we have to have design guidelines in, environmental impacts in. You know what really slows that down and might threaten that money? Historic analysis. I'm learning about something called Federal Section 4F. I don't know what it is. But when you start taking these homes, that puts the brakes on proceeding quickly. So we got to kind of keep things rolling and get that money. So just briefly for use, Mr. Parsley's City of Wilmington report said, this was on the rail bridge, because it had to be high enough to accommodate the industry. Does the proposed railroad bridge match the navigational clearance of the existing structure? This is the city's report. All vessels of significant size use the waterway to serve a single active industry north of the CSX Bridge. That's Kinder Morgan. They've gone south, okay? Because we're not that close to the ocean. You remember the Noport, Southport folk? They actually wanted our port closer to the ocean. So I think the reality of having large industry north of the bridge doesn't, doesn't match the data. Then, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, more recently in June, said, will the bridge prohibit entry of vessels to the local harbor? Alternative C, that's our 100-foot, would restrict vessels exceeding the 100-foot clearance. However, based on data collected, vessels are not currently navigating the waterway that exceed 100 feet and high. So that's the DOT report. So it's less expensive, it's better for business. We've got some demonstrated good city use on those points. And I want to talk about what's good for business, okay? Mr. Javak Terrill. So we weren't all able to speak, but would you please stand? So we've got a lot of good businesses that would be very ill-impacted by this bridge. Davis Funeral Home is at Fifth and Dawson. Okay, this was the French Davis family. He was picked by their children to carry on the business with his wife Jennifer. They use the non-vehicular lane of traffic on Dawson to service the families, limousines, horses, driveways, coming and going. The 130-foot five bridge would land there, and there are improved roadways that we don't even know the impact of. So what's good for business is supporting what's been here for generations in our town. I think what we're looking at is speculative use, okay? The boats aren't really there. There's a cement plant. 100 feet's plenty high. Barges are great versus existing people on the ground. Like my friends Sandy and Peter. This was their forever home. They bought it 25 years ago. They could live anywhere in the world. You can't recreate this quality of life. So money won't, won't help. They won't help the problem. Please don't table this. Time is of the essence. We met with the Army Corps of Engineers today at our Historic Wilmington Foundation meeting, and they expect to make a decision in a month. And your voice matters. You have federal connections, you have state connections, and you've got your business citizens and your personal citizens, and we just ask you to make your voice heard and support a bridge that will not land at Fifth, Fifth Avenue. Support one that'll land at Third. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Sue Bullock, who will be speaking to us about a request for consideration of a resolution supporting the postponement of a project. Ms. Bullock, welcome.
Mayor, council, thank you for receiving me. I'm here for a three-pronged purpose, to share, to request, and to take you on a mental journey. You should have before you, Ms. Penny is, is delivering a packet. It is for your information and knowledge to be read for the next couple of weeks as we explore this whole issue of the U-5710 flyover over Pass Bridge for Eastwood over Military. I'm Sue Bullock. I've lived at 102 Tanbridge for 50 years. I've been presenting at this, in front of this Diaz, probably for 40. Many of you know me and other capabilities and past causes. I am here wearing a hat as a resident. I'm here wearing the hat as the Wrightsville Beach Chamber Chair and as a business owner. I ask you only to read this, to look at it. It is coming up for a vote early May at the WMPO. We are asking that it be postponed, delayed, or the $85 million designated elsewhere. It's a STIP project, an improvement project. I am told that the money can't be shifted. I've been in politics too long to know that almost any time money can be shifted if it's gone through the legislature and/or the State Department in terms of DOT. I want you now to close your eyes and, in terms of the audience, follow me. You're heading from downtown to Wrightsville Beach. You've got your car full of your kids, your blankets, and you're ready. You've gone through 17 signal lights to get there. You've gone through 19 neighborhoods. You've actually passed over 200 businesses. You're at the beach. You've had a great day. You get back in your car, 4:30, 5 o'clock, your kids are there, you're on your way back. But now it's not 2025. Now it's 2027. You've come down and you're at the foot of Salisbury. You're at Johnny Mercer's. You're at Johnny Mercer's Pier. You realize you can't go back to the south end, the broader bridge, because that's under repair. That's not there. So you have to go the other direction. You have to take the north bridge, Tulane. But there are 100 cars trying to leave at the same time. You finally get across the drawbridge through past Plaza East because you're going Eastwood Road. That's the way you came in in 2025. It took you about a half hour. You're on your way out in 2027, and you get to Lions Gate or the entrance of Landfall. And there before you is a million cubic foot cement infrastructure. We call them, in my day, an overpass. They're called now a flyover to make them sound better. You now have to take the access road that will take you behind the Food Lion and around to the Drysdale entrance, across military cutoff, through and around toward Cambridge and Lidl to get around where the superstructure is. Now, if you wait a couple of years, you can use that superstructure, and you can save a whole minute and a half of your trip back downtown. You will look over all of the vegetation torn down and at rooftops. But we're still at 2027. You're headed back. You come downtown. You get to your home, and it's taken you an hour and a half because of the road construction. Your kids are whiny, your kids are sandy, and you look at each other and you say, huh, we're not going back there anytime soon. And because of this overpass flyover project, it will be extended and the problems exacerbated by the fact that the Wrightsville Beach Bridges over banks channel are basically falling in. So what we have created with this project, which was a good project to begin with in 2014, but it's now 2025, and you're looking at infrastructure that isn't needed, but the money needs to be kept. I think we can do both. I think we can ask the WMPO to delay this project until the other projects are completed and the Wrightsville Beach or the Wrightsville Avenue Galleria Project is done, and we can save the money, keep it in the district, but not create a nightmare for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next item of business is our public hearings. Item PH1 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for a residential courtyard development located at 5651 Greenville Loop Road. I have been notified by staff that the applicant of this particular item has asked for continuance to our June 17, 2025 meeting. So I will ask for a motion to continue the item till June 17. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH2, which is a resolution authorizing the City of Wilmington to participate in the commercial property assessed capital expenditure, better known as CPACE program. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. David Ingram, our sustainability manager, will introduce this item for you.
Good evening again, Mayor Pro Tim, council members. Before you tonight is the third step in the resolution to bring the CPACE program here to Wilmington. As you'll remember, we provided, go to the third slide here. We provided the adoption, resolution of intent back on, and you guys adopted it on February 4th. Tonight's agenda item is both the public hearing and the resolution to formally adopt the program. As you'll recall, there's no budgetary impact to the city for adopting this program. It is a means to bring commercial property, clean energy projects to the city, and a number of benefits, including utility savings, energy savings, enhanced building resilience, economic development potential, as well as reduced greenhouse gas emissions. And with that, also want to mention that New Hanover County as well formally adopted the program back at their, their previous board meeting on February 17th. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Ingram? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH2. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional commentary?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council in respect to the item. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH3, which is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Wilmington to rezone property containing 0.69 acres located at 4717 College Acres Drive from R5CD Medium Density Mixed Residential District, Conditional District to CBCD Community Business Conditional District for a commercial parking lot. Just I'd like to recognize again, our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Rodemacher, our planner two, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, everyone.
Can you pull the microphone down, please?
Excited to be here. It's my first presentation before the council, so. What we have here tonight is a site located on the north side of College Acres Drive, east of College Road. The site is approximately 0.69 acres in size and is currently vacant. Here, you can see the map of the site within the surrounding area. To the right, you'll see a photo of the subject property under discussion this evening. Here are the properties in the vicinity to the surrounding roadways, looking across College Acres, towards Racine Drive, and west towards College Road. Here, this slide is showing you the photos of surrounding properties and the existing land uses, which consist of a dental office, a residential duplex, commercial uses to the rear, and residential townhomes across the street. The site is in an area that is currently zoned R5CD Residential Conditional District. Community Business zoning is located to the west along College Acres Drive. To the rear of the property is Regional Business, and across the street is O&amp;I Conditional District. Residential R15 zoning is located to the east of the property along College Acres Drive. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site from the existing R5CD Conditional District to a CBCD Community Business Conditional District for a standalone commercial parking lot. The current proposal, excuse me, the previously approved site plan, CD51219, was originally approved to allow for two triplexes or six residential units on February 4th of 2020. These improvements have not been constructed, and no work has begun on the site. The current proposal consists of 48 individual parking spaces with no residential units as previously approved. Improvements will be required to be installed and reviewed by the TRC, would ensure compliance with all codes. A variance was granted for the parking lot to be allowed on a lot that is less than 75 feet in width. The comprehensive plan identifies the site as an area within, an area of opportunity, suburban, commercial retrofit, as well as within a regional retail center. Areas well-suited for infill development should be redeveloped in a way that maintains or enhances the desired character, increases housing options, and improves the overall quality of life in the vicinity. Oops. Let's see that. The proposed development does not enhance the character of the surrounding area. Automobile-oriented uses should be discouraged, and staff's recommendation for this site, we believe that the proposal is inconsistent with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and is not reasonable or in the public interest. At the last planning board meeting, the planning board did review the site plan, go through all the proper reviews, and did recommend that this conditional rezoning be approved and felt that it was reasonable and within the public interest. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waddell?
Does this, does this parking, proposed parking lot, does it service an adjacent business that is expanding into that? Can you give me some background on that? I guess it's a question for the applicant, but just for my indication.
Yeah, they probably could answer it a little bit more concisely, but my understanding from our discussions is that its main intent is to facilitate the needs and some of the increasing pressures that they're receiving from the cottages at College Acres across the street.
Okay. And then, I see, and I haven't watched the Planning Commission meeting on, on this one, but I do see two negative votes. It wasn't a unanimous approval.
That is correct.
Could you, did they give any reasoning for their, their no votes that you can recall?
If I recall correctly, the main reason was just feeling like it was inconsistent with the area, feeling that it was more in line with some of the residential trends and of the area and the anticipated patterns that they were seeing adjacent to the, this parcel being adjacent to some of the residential homes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rodenmacher?
Yes, sir. The, you, you mentioned in some of your comments that this was kind of aimed toward overflow parking from, from the residential neighborhood across the street.
Sure. Yes.
So did we fall short in our parking requirements when that was built?
No, no. In fact, there are, there are several areas. The College Acres Apartments provided for 241 spaces for their 78 units, or excuse me, that was, that was the College Acres Apartments. The cottages at College Acres provided 108 spaces for 45 units. 123 of those spaces, 123 spaces were the maximum allowed, and 50 parking spaces would have been the minimum that would have been required for that site. So they did kind of split the difference there, heading more towards the high end. And there was an additional parking lot created a couple of years ago, the College Acres Parking Lot, for an additional 33 spaces that were added just west of the dentist office in that area.
Okay, so, so we've got two parking, this was, this would make two parking lots along College Acres Drive since
Yes, sir.
the apartments that we approved were done.
Yes.
Okay. I, I look at these as a good interim use of the land because at some point, that property's going to be worth way more than whatever parking they're giving their people. I mean, it just, it just is. I mean, if this is something that's going to be tied to those apartments forever, that's a different story, but you can't, we can't do that. So anyway, I'll, I'll listen, I'll hear what the applicant has to say.
And Cindy Wolf is here representing the applicant.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I think you mentioned earlier in the year that originally there were some houses supposed to be built there?
Yes. Back in 2020, the original site plan was approved for two triplexes.
Right.
And then there was additional parking behind them for those units specifically.
And this is the same group that's changed from the housing to the parking?
Yes, sir.
Same, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the owner of the, the property that we're talking about and also the surrounding apartment complex. The subject tract, as Todd pointed out, is bound by a dentist office to the west. We've got the storage warehouse from a furniture wholesaler to the north, and then there are three rental homes on the east. And as he described, some of you in the council might remember, it was zoned for a six-unit project a couple of years back. The zoning districts that coincide, they, they coincide with what the uses are right now, and you can see that the CB comes all the way down and touches the western side of this particular tract, and that's the dentist office, and behind it, the regional business. The request is to duplicate that CB zoning where this R5 is currently. The cottages at College Acres began development on that parcel across the street back in 2018, and as a college apartment complex, it's been very successful. However, the project was developed as a mixed use, with this building being the commercial portion, and unfortunately, a couple businesses have tried to make a go here but have been unsuccessful, primarily due to lack of parking. After the initial development, the apartment owner acquired, and this is someone different from back when we first started all of this, acquired additional parcels within the block, and today, it's a very attractive and well-managed complex. However, the issue with apartments catering to college-oriented demographic, which obviously a complex in this location would, is that the units are rented by the bed, not just by the unit. You know, I might stay in an apartment that's two or three bedrooms, but it's just me. In this particular case, if it's a four-bedroom, there are four people, and that doesn't account for guests or anything else. That basically guarantees that there is one person per every bed, with occupancy, obviously. My client in 2018, different than the current ownership I'm fighting for now, insisted that the statistics of the university calculated for students and vehicles were adequate for the first phase of this development, being immediately adjacent to the university, the popularity of Uber, just both justifications that he banked on. But the spaces are not adequate. Phase one is severely underparked, and so basically, I'm here having represented all of these projects with hat in hand because, as I remember, at least one, if not a couple of the people there in your seats, said that doesn't look like enough parking, and in fact, it was not. So currently, there are 397 beds, along with the vacant 1900 square foot of office space, but only 340 parking spaces. And keep in mind that 17 of those are dedicated for handicap use. As a college facility, you can well imagine that not as many of those limited spaces are available for use. So then, some of you might remember that the third and final phase of the complex was originally approved with just, I'm sorry, there, was originally approved with just 14 units and 56 beds. Oh, and it was approved, I'm sorry, with 36 units and 108 beds. And we came back and modified that to just 14 units and 56 beds. It's not often that I'm here reducing the density of a project that's already been approved, but management knew that the extra units could not be supported with the existing deficit and the limit on parking that the code mandates. So this is the current composite project. We have a total of 453 beds, but only 442 spaces. That includes the commercial lot that does basically rent to the residents of this apartment complex. And again, 20 of those are limited for handicap only. So allowing the subject property to add the proposed 48 additional units will meet the needs of the residents of the overall complex and their occasional guests. The change to the street view along College Acres Drive will be minimal. Where there was buildings and parking, now it's all parking. The screening fence and landscaping will be provided along the common boundary with those three individual rental homes. My client has been in contact with both Stephen Williams, the owner of those lots, and Doctors Pickleheimer and Plasky, the dentist, on the other adjacent lot. Both have conveyed that they have no issue with the proposed rezoning and parking expansion. They understand its need, and that this parcel is the last piece of the puzzle for the block. This is the view of that existing commercial lot at 4711. Porous pavement was incorporated. The internal landscaping certainly softens the view from the street, and the proposed lot would be substantially the same, just a little bit deeper. We were obviously disappointed with the negative recommendation of staff, but we understand that they have to concentrate on the strategy but we understand that they have to concentrate on the strategies for more aesthetic city and not necessarily on project-specific issues and situations. We do appreciate that the positive recommendation of the Planning Commission, the two abstainer, opposition to that vote, basically were concerned about the precedent that a project was approved with not enough parking in the beginning. And so should we have just knocked units off and evened it out? I think that's a twofold conversation. One is that there needs to be another line item in the parking standards in the Land Development Code for different types of housing situations. And certainly apartment complexes or multifamily, multi-dwelling districts that are around the college or around some other types of places. Yeah, none of us want to see a huge parking lot that Best Buy would love to have on Christmas Eve. That's too much parking, it's not necessary. But there are certain situations where housing in particular, and this type of housing, does need more spaces than what is prescribed by the code. So with that, we appreciate that positive recommendation of the Planning Commission. They had some thoughtful dialogue about it, but they thought that the apartment complex and allowing this proposal would better satisfy the needs of the residents and potentially give better chance of success of that small business component. So we hope that the council will feel the same way, and I'd be happy to answer your question.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, Mr. Joyner.
Good evening, Ms. Wolf, how are you?
All right, thank you.
When you first went to staff and indicated that you were interested in re-rezoning this, what was the initial feedback that they gave you?
The same as I expected, that I would not see support for this from staff.
I mean, I understand the simplicity of it being a parking lot. There's maybe not too much of a conversation that be had beyond that, but were there any more specific recommendations other than this may not be fruitful?
Uh, no. If it's, if it was the plan that is in place right now, it is six units, that would be 18 more beds. That particular plan had 18 spaces. But the owner just feels that adding to more homes in this particular case is just counterproductive to the success of the entire complex.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Avanbar.
Cindy, could you go back, go back to the overall view, that one? The, I want to make sure I'm with you on who owns what and who this parking lot's going to benefit. So, on the, on College Acres Drive behind Cookout, you know, are you with me?
There was a Domino's back, I think that's a Domino's. And then we have the cottages at College Acres, right.
Okay, so the cottages at College Acres, that, this-
They own all of this.
They own both sides of College Road?
That's correct.
And the white space down here next to, further down toward Randall, is, what's the deal with that?
You can't see, but that's phase three. That is seven more duplexes. And that does have enough parking for its own module, if you will.
But it's still a common ownership?
Yes. Yeah, it didn't come out as dark on this.
Well, we don't sit up here and tell, I'm a capitalist. I don't sit up here and tell somebody how they should do this or whatever, but if I'm that short on parking, I believe I'd shorten up on that and make that a lot of parking, more so than just to satisfy what's going to be in that phase. So, I hope our, for the longest time, we have toyed with the idea of a zoning district called the College Zoning District, all around the college. And it would take into account this type of parking or this type of need for parking spaces. You can have, I know over, there's a gentleman that came to town, he bought a lot of houses and did a great job with them. And he's got paved, a concrete park, and I know Margaret Haynes hated it when she was here, but it's very neat, they take good care of them. But if you've got four beds and you've got four guys, or four ladies, or a mix, that can easily equate to eight people. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
And we don't take that into consideration, and I don't know if that's a social thing that we can't, we're not allowed to address, or just what, but it's a very real problem. And a lot of this is impacting our, our single-family neighborhoods that have been there before the college was built there. So it's something that we have to address. I'm not going to vote against that because they need the parking. And if they don't have a parking place there, they'll clog up their driveways and their byways, and they'll be in Doctor Pickleheimer's parking lot and everything else. But this is, this is, this is, I think we both can share in this, this is poor planning on our part. It's impacting that neighborhood, and I'm not particularly crazy about it. But from this day forward, we need to, we need to amend our ordinances for that area. And if we need to move forward with a College Acres or a college zoning district to, to address this, we need to do it post haste because this won't be the end. As those houses become old and the owners want to relocate, a developer will do the same thing that this gentleman did on, on College Acres Drive, buy 15 houses and do the same thing.
It seems a good opportunity for more housing, but yeah, it's got to match.
Well, the college is growing, and, and you know, the college has just about built out their property with all of their recent dorms that they've built and were right for them, but this is going to continue to happen. Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Cindy. I kind of remember this when it came up, you know, because I asked, was it going to be for college kids and stuff? And I guess my question is, did you trick us?
I'm sorry?
Did you trick us? Because I mean, knowing that you were going to need more parking.
We had statistics. We went, we looked in some parking, you know, the urban planning guides and that sort of thing. We also got that statistic from the college that said, of the student population that lives in the dormitories on the college, there was like a, maybe 68% had vehicles. It just doesn't work that way. If you're not living on the college, there's probably a reason you're living in the college, and it's because you don't have a vehicle or something. But people living outside of the college boundaries, for the most part, have a vehicle, whether they, you know, they certainly are within the two-mile radius or whatever. So they can't drive on campus, they can't park on campus, but they still have a vehicle for going home to visit folks or whatever.
Yeah, and more kids, I guess, take cars to school. Question, I guess, for staff, is, is the, the main reason you're denying this is because, help me out? And I saw a couple of things, but-
I think it's just the, the commercial parking lot doesn't really fit with the residential character of this, this area, and we're removing housing.
But it does meet the need of the challenge that we have with the kids that are in, that are going to be in that, in those houses that are already existing?
It definitely helps satisfy the parking needs that were being, that were being presented to the scene.
So, and that's the staff is saying, we'd rather have housing there, workforce housing or some kind of housing, instead of just a place for parking?
Right, we believe the current plan that's currently approved for the two triplex units is more appropriate.
And what happened with that triplex? What happened with the, the two triplexes?
They just have not been constructed. They were permitted, I mean, they were released for construction, that project was, but they held, the owner held up on it. And as things have transpired, that's why I'm before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Spears.
So I have two questions. First question is, is for staff. Had I not been paying attention, I mean, you didn't really sound super opposed to this. If I didn't read it, then I wouldn't have known that staff was opposed. Maybe because he was such a great reader and I was so in tune, but it sounded like he was, he was in support of this project. And had we not saw the diagram saying, what was it, modest non-support? And then the little red part of the circle. So, I mean, I'm just, again, I guess I'm piggybacking off of what Mayor Protim said and actually listening to you. You don't seem super opposed. And I don't know, for however many years I've been up here, I talk about our consistency. When we, when we talk about community to community and what doesn't fit and what does fit. And so a lot of times, we say, residents say things don't fit, and we tell them, oh, yes, they do, and then we put it there. So this time, there's a need for something. And we're not, we're saying that it doesn't fit. So I'm a little confused by that. And then also, Ms. Wolf, so I guess it was kind of a comment and a question. But then, Ms. Wolf, if this does not pass, will the housing continue to take place?
I can't say. I mean, will the 18 parking spaces support those 18 units? Or will the gentleman just decide to wait?
Because you talked about changing owners, so is it the new owner?
No, no, no. This was the original, in 2018, my client was someone different that was trying to start development here. And he immediately sort of transferred it over after approval.
So this is a new owner with a new plan?
And this owner owns all of this. So, there is the plan for more housing, the 14 units down there in the lower right-hand corner. Those he'll go forward with. And those are, will be basically self-supporting. The plan we got approved for those 14 units, we did manage to work with the ordinance and make sure that there were the same number of spaces as beds for that particular one. But the other two were so severely underparked that that's where we are today. So this is the last piece of the puzzle. The entire block, the two homes that you see against Racine are actually owned by the university. Those are occupied, I think, by visiting professors or-
Ms. Wolf, what I'm asking is where the proposed 48 spaces are going? There was a, there was a permit for development, for, for some duplexes to go there?
Two triplexes, yes, sir.
Two triplexes, okay. So what, so you don't know if this doesn't, if this fails, you don't know if that'll happen?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Waddell.
Ms. Wolf, it appeared in a couple of the arials that were in, in your presentation that it was already serving as a parking lot.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, that was the 2024 aerial. I have the most current that is available on NC Maps. They were cited as a violation, and it has not been parked since this time.
That's what drove the, that's probably what drove this application?
Partly, and just that it was sort of mishmash. People were just parking over there. And so the owner addressed it by posting signs and making sure that none of his residents were parking there.
If council were to, to deny, to, to agree with staff and to deny this request, what's the resolution on your applicant's, on your client's part?
He's a reputable man, he-
Well, I'm not, certainly not intuating, they would continue to-
Yeah, no, no, I know. I'm just saying, I don't know whether he would build the triplexes at some point in time or just sit on the land for another time.
I guess what I'm asking is how would they try to mitigate the parking issues that they're having? Would they, would they amend the undeveloped portion, the undeveloped final phase? And you're, I mean, I know you can't see the future.
I guess that's certainly an option, but as I said, that started out as 36 units, and now we're at 14, you know?
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, that was, the bottom white section, if you will, was three 12-unit buildings originally. And they knew that just wasn't going to fly. And that was sort of, we, that was contrary to staff's recommendation, but we were able to get that approved as the final, you know, portion of the, the complex. So when we amended that to the 14 units and made them duplexes similar to the streets gave, I mean, everybody was, that was a win-win situation.
So it was approved at 30, the undeveloped portion was approved at 36?
Originally, I had it modified about two years ago now to the 14 units.
Okay, I remember that.
And it is self-sufficient.
What was the driver for that? Was it parking?
The parking.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, thanks.
Mr. Avanbar.
Withdraw, that answered my question.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time I'm going to go to the public hearing and ask for anybody in the public which is speak on item PH3. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am. Please come forward and state your name and where you live for the record, thank you.
Hi, my name is Grace Sneed. I am the property manager at this complex here. I live in Wilmington. We do not have enough parking, like Ms. Wolf has said, for our residents or their guests. Students rely heavily on their vehicles, and they want to be able to have guests over. If we rezon this into a parking lot, it would benefit us greatly. And I do have 223 signatures here that is in favor of rezoning this into a parking lot. And I hope you take this into consideration when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
I did have a question.
Ms. Ravanbar.
The parking lot that, the other, the additional parking lot, has it improved? It is improved?
The 32-space parking lot?
The one that's just to the east of this one, I can see it on the aerial, it doesn't look like it's, this one right here.
The one that says existing commercial lot?
Yeah, mhm. What is this? Existing lot, okay.
That existing lot is-
So you did mention that this aerial is when people were illegally parking in it and that's seized?
That's correct.
Okay.
But this one was a permitted use. This was already zoned CB, that one that was on, and it is, that's what this, the new one would look like, is this right here. This is the one that has 32 spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk, have you received any additional comments?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Any further comments from council? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve my counselman Ravanbar, second by counselman Waddell. I will ask you, Mr. Ravanbar, to please read a consistent statement for the record, sir.
Let me make sure I'm on the right one. Okay. I moved to approve the proposed amendment to rezon property located at 4717 College Acres Drive from R5CD, medium-density mixed residential district, conditional district, to CBCD, community business, conditional district for a commercial parking lot, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report. And to find approval of the rezoning request as reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons, the proposed rezoning would provide additional parking for the existing residential development in the area.
All in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to two. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by counselman Joyner, second by Mayor Protim Barnett. Further discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH number four, which is an ordinance, or number three. Yeah, number four. Ordinance admitting the official zoning map of the city of Wilmington to rezon property containing 6.12 acres located at 5601 Oleander Drive from CB Community Business District to RBCD to Regional Business District, Conditional District for a commercial recreation center. This, I'd like to recognize our city manager again, Mr. Carter, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rodomacher will review this item for us as well.
Okay, let's do it again. This site is located on the north side of Oleander Drive, south of Park Avenue and west of Hinton Avenue. Across Oleander Drive and to the south is Dogwood Lane. The site is approximately 6.12 acres in size and currently has several small buildings at this location. Here, the map will show the properties within the surrounding area. You see the Jungle Rapids, Hospital, Hayman Park, Shinwood Subdivision are in the general vicinity of this project. Here are the properties as you look down Oleander Drive frontage. And here is a look at the area from the Park Avenue frontage. The adjacent properties, here are some photos of the surrounding properties and land uses. You've got a commercial multi-tenant building, including- You've got a commercial multi-tenant building, including Casey's Buffet to the west, Dollar General to the south, residential home across Park Avenue, and Bradley Square Shopping Center to the east. The site is located in an area that is currently zoned with community business. R fifteen zoning is located to the north along Park Avenue. All other zoning surrounding this property is community business. The applicant proposes to rezone the site from the existing community business district to regional business conditional district for a commercial entertainment complex. This request is being made due to the original CB district limiting entertainment complexes to two thousand square feet in size. The current proposal consists of a forty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixteen-square-foot two-story structure. Proposed uses on-site include an arcade, bowling alley, restaurant, and bar. Six pickleball courts are located on the outside of the structure with a proposed future expansion of ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet. Two-hundred-and-nine parking spaces are proposed with a minimum of one-hundred-and-two required and a maximum allowance of two-hundred-and-sixty-two spaces. Eighteen of these spaces are specifically designated for the future expansion that's proposed. The proposal also includes a ten-foot multi-use path along Park Avenue, as noted in the growth strategies map. Here are the elevations submitted by the applicant. The comprehensive plan identifies the site as within a high-density transitions area of opportunity and a mixed-use place on the growth strategies map. The property is also identified as being along a high-capacity transit route, a major corridor, and a community parkway. Development should create places, streets, and spaces that are visually attractive, safe, accessible, functional, inclusive, have their own distinct identities, and maintain or improve desired character. Staff notes that this is compatible infill development along the corridor as it increases access to commercial services along this major corridor. The proposal creates a visually attractive place and improves the desired character of the area. Staff does believe that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the request is reasonable and in public interest, and does recommend conditional approval. At the last planning board meeting, the planning board unanimously recommended approval of this proposal. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions of staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just I'd like to recognize the applicant.
I'm John Reese, architect, and I'm a resident of Wilmington, nineteen-twenty-five Brookhaven Road. And I designed this project and work with the owners. You know, I'd like to thank the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and the city council for their consideration of this project and the challenging task of overseeing the planning of all this Wilmington growth. I would also like to thank the Planning Commission and staff for their review and recommendation for approval. We worked with them closely, and they indicate, as does their report, all strong support indicators based upon the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan analysis. We're proposing to rezone this from CB to RB because it's such a big piece of property. We're taking down six acres, and our uses allowed under CB, but we're just a bit larger than what you would typically have in CB. So RB allows it to be typically larger. So underneath, under existing zoning, we could develop a smaller building, but we have a six-acre lot, so we need RB. There's no other, we're asking for no other changes or variances to any of the codes. Everything else is allowed. We've got a traffic impact analysis, and it indicates that we should put in a light. So our owners are going to put in a light at no cost to the city, and no, they're going to do that on their own dime. The soils analysis is suitable. We're going to reuse it. We're not going to have a lot of haul off, and it also, it's got great infiltration. The project received probably the biggest approval in addition to the Planning Commission is Ms. Black, who owns all these acres, has trusted us to redevelop this footage of Oleander. And she trusts me, and she trusts the owners, and that's a long time coming. Who knows how many times she gets approached every year to develop her property? And we're developing commercial and not residential. So I think staff saw that, and so did the Planning Commission. And that ends my comments. I don't know if anybody, oh, you're not right behind me. But if you have any questions for me, I'd like to go over it. There we go. So we're going to have bowling alleys, indoor attractions, arcade, and hopefully the world's best burger. And there you go. There's the six acres. And I've got my aerial view here. There's a mezzanine. Got a thirty-foot TV. So it's going to almost be like a sportsbook-type feel on the second level. And then there's the front facing Oleander. Let's see. That's another view. Yeah, so that's probably the best view right there. Yeah, so that's our building, and really appreciate your consideration and approval. If you have any questions, I'll answer them as best I can.
How many lanes in the bowling alley?
We're going to do ten lanes of traditional bowling and eight lanes of duckpin bowling on the second level. Eighteen lanes.
Eighteen, so really just ten, because nobody counts the duckpins. No, I'm teasing, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, any other? I'm sorry, yes, sir. Councilmember Spears. So you kind of speed-flipped through the PowerPoint. I don't know, are you trying to hide something? I need you to go back through a little slower this time.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. So...
Let me see the amenities.
All right, here's the first level. And we have two, as you walk in the door...
Okay, here we go.
We have, on the right, we have two slides that go up to the mezzanine and draw people up to the mezzanine. And then we have arcade to the left, and then we have some party rooms, and we have ten bowling lanes. We have eight axe-throwing, and then we have the bar that has indoor and outdoor, has some roll-up doors in the center up at the top. We have a full-service kitchen, and we have an elevator.
Get to the detailed stuff. Charlie likes pictures. He likes, he likes detailed pictures, so.
So we're going to have pickleball courts, patio and counter seating in the main-level bar, lawn games, including cornhole and trash-can pong, group seating and fire pits on the outside, bike parking in the River Sea, River Sea Bike Way. On the main level, we have a sports bar featuring a thirty-foot LED screen, modern arcade, eight bowling lanes, six open axe-throwing lanes, two private bowling of those. We have these partitionable party rooms and then roll-up doors for indoor-outdoor experience. The mezzanine, of course, is the duckpin bowling and some virtual reality rooms up there where you can hit a golf ball and things like that, and then pool hall upstairs. So the upstairs will be a little bit more adult-oriented than the downstairs with the arcade. So that's our, that's our basic plan. It's going to be very similar to some of the other entertainment complexes, but we're going to have a lot of bowling, and that's going to be great. So it'll have a full indoor, all the LED RGB-colored light shows over top the bowling lane. So it's going to be a first-class facility. We're working with DFX. I did one of these at Universal Studios twenty-five years ago, and we're using actually the same USA bowling that we used there when I was in Los Angeles. So it's kind of interesting. They built that one. And there's my building. It's going to look good, I think, on Oleander. It's kind of a modern building. It's going to look a little bit like a spaceship that landed on Oleander. So it's, it's, all my buildings are a little non-traditional looking. So they wanted something, wanted something that would draw people in. So it looks like an entertainment complex from the road.
You may have just touched on it, but I was going to ask, is this sort of a standalone project? Or is this, you've done something very similar in other cities? And if so, where?
I practiced in Los Angeles with my own firm for ten years before I moved to Wilmington eighteen years ago. And so I did one at Universal Studios, Gillian's Entertainment Complex. I worked at Universal Studios Hollywood. They have a city walk. So I did projects there. I did some projects for Disney and different things, but I did that one there. And the only thing that's really changed is now the LED, and we don't have to, instead of fluorescent. So the technology is so much better. So this thing is, there's so much more entertainment that goes into it. But that one was a success for a lot of years. So I did that one. I do a lot of restaurants around town. I do kind of restaurants all over, you know? So this is kind of my specialty.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH four. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional comments?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. Are there any further comments from council? Questions? Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. I see that we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Rabinbar, second by Councilmember Andrews.
Just, yeah, Dr. Black and his family have had great vision in that chunk of land they own there. There's, this is going to be great, but for you folks that aren't from here, that used to be where the old Rath Skeller was, restaurant and bar, and then jazz land. A lot of great groups played there over the years. And it's just, it's a great place, and couldn't pick a better spot for an operation like this. Because, I mean, it's not going to impact anybody like a neighborhood or whatever. It's just a great spot. So I'm glad it's going to, I hope it flies tonight.
Mr. Rabinbar, will you please read it?
Yes, I'm sorry, I got carried away with myself.
That's okay.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at fifty-six-oh-one and fifty-six-oh-three Oleander Drive from CB Community Business RB/CD to RB/CD Regional Business Conditional District for a commercial recreation center and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report, and to find approval of the rezoning request as reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning would allow for compatible commercial development and would provide additional recreational opportunities for the area. And there was one more thing that I was going to mention. Prior to the city annex in this property in the late, early nineties, this property was zoned B two, which is the county's heaviest retail. So we're not, we're kind of taking it back to where it was. So it's not a drastic rezoning. Thank you.
All right, all in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Waddell, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Discussion, all in favor of that motion? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH five, which is an ordinance permitting the official zoning maps of the city of Wilmington to rezone property containing zero-point-one-four acres of land located at one-oh-two and one-oh-four Meere Street from R three Medium High Density Mixed Residential District to UMX Urban Mixed Use District. Again, Mr. Carter?
Mr. Mayor, Haley Hopkins with the Planning Department will review this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council. For your review this evening, we have a general rezoning located at one-oh-two and one-oh-four Meere Street. The subject property consists of approximately zero-point-one-four acres or about six thousand square feet and is currently vacant. The site is located at the intersection of South Front Street and Meere Street. Tonight's proposal requests rezoning the site from R three to UMX Urban Mixed Use District. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request and images of the existing site conditions. There are two parks and several medium-to-high-density sites in the general vicinity. These are photos of the existing street conditions surrounding the subject site, looking north and south on South Front Street and west and east on Meere Street. These are photos of the adjacent properties and land uses. A vacant site is located to the north, industrial to the west, commercial to the south, and a single dwelling to the east. As mentioned, the site is currently zoned R three Medium High Density Mixed Residential District. The site is bordered by UMX to the north, R three to the east, R three and UMX to the south, and industrial to the west. One parcel south are several properties rezoned to UMX in November of two thousand twenty-four. The subject property is located within a post-industrial and inner-city revitalization area of opportunity on the comprehensive plan's growth strategies map. It is located along a community connector street, South Front Street, and falls between two designated urban mixed-use centers. The comprehensive plan encourages an integrated mix of uses as transitions between established residential areas and commercial-oriented community connector streets. The subject site also falls within the South Side Small Area Plan adopted in two thousand nine in which the recommended land use is urban mixed-use zoning. Post-industrial and inner-city revitalization principles support fostering the identity of small urban neighborhoods and sub-districts. Rezoning to UMX encourages the development of a longtime vacant and underutilized site, creates an appropriate transition to South Front Street, and preserves the existing neighborhood character. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, and staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and the South Side Small Area Plan, and that the request is in the public's interest. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Just I'd like to recognize the applicant. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Pro Tem, and council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Christian Cardamon. I'm the applicant. I just have a couple of points I'd just like to reiterate. I think the staff did a great job kind of hitting most of the main points. I think the biggest factor that I think we should recognize is the alignment with Wilmington Strategic Plan, supporting the South Side Small Area Plan. That was aimed to revitalize the South Side Wilmington by encouraging mixed-use development. It aligns with the city's goals of increasing walkability, promoting economic activity, and improving neighborhood connectivity. Additionally, this request is in harmony with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, which also calls for higher-density mixed-use development in key areas near infrastructure and transit corridors. The transition from R three to UMX is consistent with the city's commitment to urban infill, smart growth, and responsible land use. This property also originally had a Front Street address. While we're trying to decide what to do with it, we switched and obtained Meere's street addresses and subdivided it. But originally, it was facing Front Street. The properties all around it are, have already been rezoned if they weren't existing UMX. The current R three zoning limits its development potential, and UMX will allow for a dynamic mix of residential and commercial uses there. I think this rezoning enhances the area's vibrancy and promotes responsible growth and supports the development of much-needed housing, retail, and other services in the area. The site is surrounded by existing and planned-use mixed developments, making UMX the natural choice for this location. It's well-served by existing infrastructure, including roads, utilities, and public services, which can easily support the proposed zoning change. This rezoning would complement the city's broader efforts to revitalize the South Side Wilmington by fostering dynamic and sustainable urban development. In conclusion, the rezoning of these two lots, I think, is an essential step towards achieving Wilmington's strategic goals and the mandate put in place with their strategic plans, the Small Area Map Plan specifically. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? The applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if everybody in the public wishes to speak on this particular item. Madam Clerk, have you had any additional comments?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from council? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember... We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Waddell. Mr. Barnett, will you please read a consistent statement for the record, sir?
I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezon property located at 102 and 104 Meyer Street from R3 Medium High Density Mixed Residential District to UMX Urban Mixed Use District, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the Comprehensive Plan, based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report, and find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons: The proposed rezoning is consistent with the area and would allow for compatible infill development.
Okay. All ready to take a vote? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Andrews. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item PH six, which is an ordinance submitting the official zoning maps of the city of Wilmington to rezon property containing 4.19 acres located at 6624 and 6710 Market Street from R15 Moderate Density Single-Dwelling District to RB Regional Business District. Again, I'd like to recognize our manager, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick O'Mahony, Planning Manager with the Planning Department, will I review this item for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. As I mentioned, this is a general rezoning request located at 6624 and 6710 Market Street. The property currently consists of approximately 4.19 acres, and is, as mentioned, zoned R15, and the applicant's requesting a general rezoning to the RB Regional Business Zoning District. Site's located on the south side of Market Street, and it's currently occupied by boat storage use. Here's a map showing the general vicinity surrounding the request. Here are some photos of the existing conditions along Market Street and the access drive to the subject parcels in the rear. Here are some photos of adjacent land uses as well, generally surrounded by commercial uses, including car dealerships and a boat repair use. There's the Blair Elementary School located to the west, with residential uses located to the south. Here is the zoning and land use map. As mentioned, site's currently zoned R15. They're requesting rezoned to RB, which you see on the slide here, to the north, east, and west. There is R15, I should say, to the east, RB to the west, ONI to the south, which is the school. Subject property is located within a high-density transition area of opportunity within the Comprehensive Plan's growth strategies map, as well as within a mixed-use place, mixed-use center. The Comprehensive Plan supports commercial development along major corridors, and also supports appropriate transitions along nearby neighborhoods. Rezoning the site allows for commercial development and redevelopment along this major corridor, Market Street. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, and that the request is reasonable in public interest. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval at their February meeting. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and the applicant's here as well.
Are there any questions? Staff? Okay. Thank you, sir. Does anyone like to recognize the applicant?
Hey, there.
How you doing?
Doing fine, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you, you guys having me here today. This is, it's good to see you all again here, I appreciate.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by thanking you all for your service and spending your evening dedicating your lives to this board. I know there's a lot of effort that goes into this, and, and you're doing a good job. I appreciate everything that you do. I was engaged by Mr. Johnny Mercer, the owner of this property, to, to evaluate and market this property, which is for sale and, and could be yours. So get, you find me after the meeting here. Let me know. With the existing access direct onto Market Street, and then a right-of-way buffer existing in the rear separating it from the residential property behind it, we felt that having a patch of R15 single-family homes nestled into this location between the 15-acre Stevenson Hendrick car lot and the Harley Davidson motorcycle dealership was not going to match the character of this commercial corridor or provide a particularly attractive place to live. So after consulting the zoning map, the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, and getting great feedback from the zoning staff, thank you to Mr. Radamacher and Mr. Omohoney in particular, who took quite a bit of time to, to guide me in this, we humbly request that the site be rezoned to, to regional business, to match the adjoining property which the Mercers own, which is already regional business, and, and also to match the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, and the character of the wider corridor. That was just the logical choice based on the, the facts on the ground there. And that's my pitch.
Okay. Any questions? The applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH six. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional comments?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. Are there any additional comments from, questions from counsel? Okay. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of counsel, and I will also mention that whoever makes the motion must read a consistent statement for the record. We have a, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Andrews. Mr. Barnett?
I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezon property located at 6624 and 6710 Market Street from R15 Moderate Density Single-Dwelling District to RB Regional Business, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the Comprehensive Plan, based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff's report, and to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons: The proposed rezoning is consistent with surrounding properties and would be compatible with the area.
Okay. All right, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Ravanbarke, second by Councilmember Joyner. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is, our ordinance is, item 01, is an ordinance making supplemental appropriation in the amount of $20,000 to the Special Purpose Fund for the National Recreation and Parks Association and Nike Incorporated Gender Equity and Youth Sports Grant. This time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amy Beatty, our Parks and Recreation Director, will I review this item for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and City Council. The purpose of this ordinance is to appropriate a $20,000 grant award from the National Recreation and Park Association funded by Nike to implement a girls' sports program. The funding will be provided for coaches, clinics, and sports equipment for participants in the program, with the mission of increasing athletic participation at the middle school and high school level of our area girls. I'll try and answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Beatty? None? Thank you. Yes?
Comment. Did you happen to see the commercial during the Super Bowl where they talked about the little girl who, like, at three years old can run forever, and then they say, but when she gets eight to 12, she thinks she can't do it? And, and I saw that, and that really impacted me, because for a lot of girls, their self-esteem is just totally shot, you know? And so one of the things that I'd like to do, as, you know, in my church and stuff, is to do a special with girls, and, you know, helping them to, to get over that, that hump. So.
That's, that's very much aligned with what we're trying to do. Most of the youth sports activities that we offer through our community centers are co-ed or male-only, especially with the surrounding schools that we target at the MLK community with Williston. And so the, the purpose is to, again, increase participation by those girls at the middle school and high school level in athletics.
Yeah, it's a great commercial. All right, I, I'm in favor very much.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Andrews. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Next item is an ordinance, item 02A, which is the ordinance making supplemental appropriation in the amount of $172,690 to the Special Purpose Fund for an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Award awarded by the United States Department of Energy, and then that is followed by a resolution, which is item 02B, which is a resolution authorizing the award of the Fleet Electric Vehicle Transition Strategy Contract in the amount of $99,866 to ICF Incorporated LLC. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave Redding will make one more appearance before you to overview both of these items.
Good evening, again. The item in front of you, as I just mentioned, is appropriating the funds from our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. The city was a direct award recipient of the, of the $172,690 from the Department of Energy. Previously, we provided a strategy for how we're, we're going to be spending those funds here within the city, the first of which was going to be the Fleet Transition Study, which will be, I'll talk about in more detail as the second item on this matter. Other use of the funds, about $50,000 are gonna be going towards energy efficiency improvements for low- to moderate-income homes. We're doing that in collaboration with our Healthy Homes Program that's already established within the city. And the final portion of the funding will be used to offset costs for solar array installation on the city facility. Right now, we're targeting the upcoming Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility, which will be, it still has not broken ground yet. Item 2B is the resolution authorizing the award of the Vehicle Transition Strategy to ICF Incorporated for $99,866. We're really focusing on the strategy as a way to address our EV transition goals in a very strategic manner. The components of the, the plan, we're gonna be looking at fleet evaluation, be looking at the telemetrics of the fleet, be looking at rightsizing the fleet, as well as developing a schedule. What are the most appropriate vehicles to place, replace when, and on what kind of a schedule? As well as looking at the electricity grid impacts of having to install EV charging We hope to also be able to develop a vehicle purchasing policy that departments would, would go through as they're looking at replacing vehicles going forward. We hope to be able to complete the vehicle transition study within six to eight months, once we get the contractor awarded and get the contractor going on the project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of these two items.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ingle? And Mr. Joyner?
Thank you for bringing this to us this evening. You said six to eight months, potentially, once we have, once we're under contract to have the study conducted?
Correct. That was the timeframe that they gave us during their presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Well, again, thank you for bringing this. I know I've been very impatient for some of these things to come up, and I'm very pleased to hear that we could have this by the end of the year. Thank you, or even, well, end of the year. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay. What are the wishes of counsel in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Ravanbarke. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
Jill, what's going on?
Moving kind of slow?
A motion, it is.
We'll just take a voice for it. We have a motion that was made by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. That was unanimous vote on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second? We do have a motion by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on both first and second reading. So let's now go to the item 02B, which is the resolution authorizing the award of Fleet Electric Vehicle Transition Strategy Contract in the amount of $99,866 to ICF Incorporated LLC. What are the wishes of counsel? We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first and only reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item 03A and 03B. Item 03A is the resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a supplemental agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation to accept $2,400,000 in Surface Transportation Block Grant Direct Attributable Funds with a required local match of $600,000 for the South Seventeenth Street Multi-Use Path Project, and item 03B is the ordinance making supplemental appropriations in the amount of $3 million for the South Six, Seventeenth Street Multi-Use Path Project in the Streets and Sidewalks Fund. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rachel McIntyre, Project Manager, will I review this item for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. In September, we brought you a resolution authorizing the City Manager to apply for DA funds from the WMPO for the South Seventeenth Street Multi-Use Path Project. That resolution was approved, and we submitted an application requesting 2.4 million NDA funds during the WMPO's FY25 Call for Projects. Out of the nine submittals, the WMPO received, the South Seventeenth Street MEP was the highest-scoring project. Now that we've been awarding the funding by the WMPO, we need to execute a supplemental agreement with NCDOT to add the funding to the project. Before you is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into that supplemental agreement with NCDOT to accept the 2.4 million in Surface Transportation Block Grant Direct Attributable Funds with a required local match of $600,000 for the South Seventeenth Street MEP project, as well as a companion ordinance to appropriate the funds. The total increase to the project budget is $3 million. The local match is being covered by a $100,000 contribution from the city's Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements Committee, and $500,000 from interest earnings on capital balances. This project includes a 10-foot-wide multi-use path along the west side of South Seventeenth Street between Harbor Drive and Shipyard Boulevard, as well as pedestrian accommodations at the signalized intersection of Seventeenth and Shipyard. The project is programmed in the current STIP, utilizing the state's allocation of federal funds through the STVG program, which requires a 20% local match. Staff recommends approval of these items, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any further questions? Staff? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna go to the resolution first. What are the wishes of counsel in, in respect to the item 03A, which is the resolution that we see on the agenda item? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on only reading for the resolution, and then brings us to item 03B, which is the ordinance making supplemental appropriations in the amount of $3 million for the South Seventeenth Street Multi-Use Path Projects in the Streets and Sidewalks Funds. What are the wishes of counsel in respect to that? We have a motion to again approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Waddell, second by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our resolution. We have a resolution of the Wilmington City Council in support of a 100-foot fixed span replacement for the Capeham Memorial Bridge, and at this And at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Silet Andrews. Ms. Andrews?
So I did make some changes to this resolution from what you saw yesterday, based on the input that we had at yesterday's Agenda Review Meeting. So, and unfortunately, it loaded to the public site, but it did not load on our, on our tablets. So I'm going to read it to you as it stands on the public site, and you can read along, and it'll just tell you the changes. So this says, "Resolution by the Wilmington City Council in support of a one-hundred-foot fixed span replacement for the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. Whereas, the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge has been declared functionally obsolete by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, NCDOT, due to escalating repair and maintenance costs. And whereas, the NCDOT has completed an assessment of reasonable needs for maritime navigation for the proposed Cape Fear Memorial Bridge replacement, analyzing three alternatives: A, a movable span with sixty-five-foot clearance extendable to one hundred and thirty-five feet; B, a fixed span with a one hundred and thirty-five-foot clearance; and C, a fixed span with a one-hundred-foot clearance. And whereas, the existing bridge has a federally mandated vertical clearance of one hundred and thirty-five feet, but the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge Replacement Navigation Impact Report dated June twenty twenty-four states that, quote, "Under alternative C, the proposed vertical navigation clearances for the proposed bridge would accommodate heights of existing vessels along the waterway, thus reasonably accommodating current navigational needs," unquote. And whereas, alternative B, a fixed one hundred thirty-five-foot bridge, would require extensive new infrastructure, including a longer off-ramp terminating at Fifth Avenue and an overpass above South Third and Fourth Streets, leading to a significant adverse impacts on the Wilmington Historic District, including potential demolition of historic structures and disruption of the district's historic integrity. And whereas, on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Wilmington City Council unanimously passed a resolution against implementing tolls on the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. And whereas, alternative A, the movable span while preserving the existing footprint would be prohibitively expensive, costing nearly twice as much as alternative B, and requiring continuous maintenance and operational costs due to the complexity of movable bridge components. And whereas, the Wilmington City Council is committed to preserving the city's historic character while ensuring infrastructure solutions that are financially responsible and meet transportation and navigational needs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wilmington City Council formally supports the selection of alternative C, a fixed one-hundred-foot span replacement for the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge as the preferred alternative to balance economic feasibility, historic preservation, and transportation efficiency. That the Wilmington City Council urges the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the United States Coast Guard, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers to prioritize alternative C in their decision-making process and funding allocations. That copies of this resolution be transmitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the United States Coast Guard, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and other relevant stakeholders.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Mr. Waddell.
So this resolution, that Councilmember Andrews explained that it's different than the one that was noticed to the public, and that's in our packet. And I did, I was able, while she was reading it, to pull it up on the website and kind of follow along on the city council's website page that's open to the public. But it's different than what was noticed to the public substantially. So I guess my question is, would, would, would her, if she's going to move that, would that need to be, to come in the form of a substitute motion?
It would be considered a substitute motion.
So it would not be the resolution that's in front of us? She would need to move it as a substitute resolution?
A substitute resolution, yes, sir.
Okay. And then?
And then that would need to be voted on. The motion for the substitute resolution would need to be voted on first.
Thank you for that clarification.
Ms. Andrews, you want to go ahead and put that into the record as a motion, and then we have a motion by Councilmember Andrews. If we have a second to that motion. The one thing that I just want to kind of, and I do appreciate what Mrs. Andrews and Silet is working on here, because we're all working hard to make certain that this has the least amount of impact to our community. And this is a very complicated and complex bridge that we are working on. And I just want to, before we get into a lot of the discussions in regards to the resolutions, I do want to share some history, because I think it's extremely important, because I've been here since the beginnings when they talked about the Skyway Bridge moving to the south there on Independence Boulevard. And I think it's important that we have an understanding of what happened there and why we're talking about a new bridge at the memorial, because I think it's extremely important, because it affects us in many different ways. Number one, there was about fifteen resolutions, if not more, of support for the Skyway. County of New Hanover, City of Wilmington, County of Brunswick, County of Pender, City of Leland. There was a number of, I think just about everybody in this region supported the Skyway Bridge. And that was going to be a toll facility. We always knew that, because as long as you had a bridge that you could cross, like the Isabel Holmes Bridge or the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge, you could toll the facility. So we started working on that. In fact, the city, through its bond referendum in respect to transportation at that time, even extended Independence Boulevard to a four-lane facility in anticipation to that bridge being built. That's how confident we all were that this was going to happen. And then there was no protection of any right-of-way on the West Bank by anybody that I'm aware of. There was a lot of discussions, a lot of meetings with a lot of the neighborhoods over there. And I have sensitivity to everybody that's involved here tonight, because I saw the way the elected leaders over there also worked for their communities. And I was at probably the worst meeting, one of the worst meetings I've ever been to in my life, at Belleville Elementary School, when the entire neighborhood came forward and said they couldn't get a hold of the Turnpike Authority, which at that time was going to authorize the funding for this bridge. So there was a lot of movement as to where the bridge would go, how it was going to be built, and how it was going to be paid for, including the tolling process. And finally, we came down to one path that was a little bit south of Brunswick Forest. We moved it a thousand feet or a thousand yards to accommodate the neighborhood and the concerns that they had. And I still don't believe it would suffice. It was going to be something for them to approve. And we tried to move it a little bit further south, and because of the environmental sensitivity to the south of Brunswick Forest, we were not able to do that. So the Skyway Bridge went away. Change of administrations, change of leadership at the legislative level, and it just went dark for quite some time. I have not been part of the MPO for quite some time, but then the discussion started ramping up about a replacement of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge from a four-laneed facility to a six-lane facility. And I always knew that without the Skyway Bridge, because of the amount of truck traffic it was going to take out of the port of Wilmington, that that's one of the reasons we were going to build that bridge in addition to the number of cars that were coming from the southern end of the county. Curie Beach, Carolina Beach, all along that corridor have to come all the way up to the memorial bridge turn, so it creates another traffic issue for us, as we all have experienced to live here in New Hanover County. So we started, I guess, talking about this bridge. And unbeknownst to any of us, I guess they changed it in the legislation, I don't know when they changed it. I always thought that if you had an existing facility, you could not toll it. That was the rule of law at the time. But now, the law changed. If you add a lane or two lanes to any kind of facility, there is the possibility now of it being told. And the tolling issue is a significant issue for all of us also, not just the height, but the tolling issue for us, because that's six lanes of traffic going in and out of the city of Wilmington, predominantly a lot of it being truck traffic. That's one of the reasons that this city, when Councilmember Paget was here, was talking about rail realignment, because majority of the trucks that are coming out of the port, ninety-five percent of the cargo that's coming out of the port of Wilmington is being transported by trucks, and it's coming right over that bridge, it's coming right up Front Street, and we're all dealing with that impact. That's why there's hopefully some significant improvements that will happen on Carolina Beach Road. So here we are today, something that we've been talking about. I know that Councilmember Waddell is sitting on the MPO. I've sat on the MPO. I think Councilmember Spear sits on the MPO. And we were concerned about the tolling process, and we, I think, along, all of us here, supported passing no tolls. We didn't think that was fair to the citizens of this community that go back and forth, in addition to the people that are coming in here. And so we failed on that vote. It was a five, I can't remember the number of vote, but myself and Councilmember Waddell, Commissioner Barfield at the time, Mayor Bozeman, and Mayor Willis voted against that tolling process. Now, I'll give it a lot to the department and to the MPO that were able to obtain two hundred and forty-two million dollars from the infrastructure bill that was passed by President Biden, the legislature at that time, to hopefully help us build this bridge, because every amount of money that we can get to build this bridge reduces the possibility of us having to get a toll or put a toll on that bridge. Obviously, if you did it one hundred percent, and we had to pay for it one hundred percent with our own money, I believe it would probably be told. And I think it's a pretty good chance that it will be told if it's one hundred percent, if the two hundred and forty-two million dollars goes away. So now we're in this process of determining height, tolling, dredging, impacts downriver, upriver, environmental issues that we're going to be contending with. I've talked to some people from the department today that had indicated, because I wanted to know kind of a timeline that we're talking about, because we're going through a significant, and I mean a significant, evaluation of this entire process. And we could probably be talking up to five years of just nothing but studies, permitting processes and the like that we're going to be going through on both sides of the river and where this road is going to finally end up. Our concern as elected leaders here in Wilmington is the impact on what is going to happen to your neighborhood, our community, our road systems, everything. Because I know one thing, wherever this thing lands, and nobody wants to land it, for it to land in his backyard, what we are asking for is a minimal impact to our community. I would love to see it fall in the same location that it currently resides in today. I think everybody up here would love to see a minimum impact, because we feel that's very important. We also are very, very concerned about the tolling, because I've shared this with many people. You've got a lot of people coming in and over that bridge, and I will say this. Tolling apparatus that may be used, they cannot share with us what that tolling price is going to be. It could be five dollars, it could be seven dollars, it could be two dollars. We have no idea. But we do know this, that based on the, based on the study that we had conducted at the MPO, I believe that ten percent of the traffic that's coming in and off that bridge would divert, go up Third Street or Fifth Avenue to the Isabel Holmes Bridge. When we evaluated the company that did that study for us, we found that they missed that mark in Louisville, Kentucky, but I believe Mr. Waddell shared with me by almost fifty percent. That's a pretty significant miss. So I feel pretty confident it's going to be a lot more people than that that will use that corridor going up Third Street. So I know a lot of you have experienced what happened when we closed the bridge and the amount of truck traffic that was coming through there. I would imagine, because we want, a lot of people will be able to use the Isabel Holmes Bridge, and they don't have the money to cross, and hopefully we'll find, if it's told, we'll find some process that we can help those folks that go back and forth on a regular basis. But we feel, I feel very passionately about what the traffic impacts are going to be on Third Street and on Fifth Avenue especially. So we're going to be going through a pretty significant process here. In addition to that, the State Historic Preservation Office, you've heard of their name, SHIPO, has also weighed in. They are the, they are the entity for the state of North Carolina that evaluates what the impacts are going to be to our community. Remember, this is one of the most historic and oldest cities in the state of North Carolina Incorporated in seventeen thirty-nine. So they are supposed to be our eyes and ears to make certain that whatever impact is going to happen with that bridge, it is going to have minimum impact to this community. So I know that Silet has put forward a resolution. I have a resolution that I'd also like to put out there that mirrors a lot of what you have said. But I want to go ahead and read it into the record. And the resolution of the Wilmington City Council to support the urging of NCDOT to explore all practical alternatives to prevent impacts to homes, businesses, and historic structures in replacing the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. Whereas, the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge has been declared functionally obsolete by the North Carolina Department of Transportation due to escalating repair and maintenance costs. And whereas, the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge Replacement Project is listed as Project HB dash zero zero three nine in the NCDOT State Transportation Improvement Program and is funded for preliminary engineering, design, planning, environmental studies. And whereas, the NCDOT has completed an assessment of reasonable needs for maritime navigation for the proposed Cape Fear Memorial Bridge replacement, analyzing three alternatives: A, movable span with a sixty-five-foot clearance extendable to one thirty-five; B, a fixed span with a thirty, one hundred and thirty-five-foot clearance; and C, a fixed span of one-hundred-foot vertical clearance, plus or minus thirty-five, to determine by the United States Army Corps of Engineers, four oh eight section, and United States Coast Guard. And whereas, the Wilmington City Council recognizes the determinations regarding the height, design, and placement of a replacement bridge would potentially impact residents and businesses living within Wilmington's downtown communities. And whereas, the Wilmington City Council recognizes that determinations regarding the height, design, and placement of a replacement bridge would potentially impact the Wilmington Historic District, including historic structures. And whereas, the Historic Wilmington Foundation has expressed its preference for the one-hundred-foot to be determined by the U.S. ACE, ACE, four oh eight section, and United States Coast Guard option, having stated concerns that a one-hundred and thirty-five-foot option might pose significant threats to historic buildings, potentially leading to demolition or exposing them to indirect adverse impacts such as new traffic patterns and compromised sightlines that could detract from the historic setting's integrity. And whereas, the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office, which seeks to advance the goals and purposes of historic preservation, has commented that the hundred-foot plus or minus, which was put into the record, vertical clearance range would be acceptable. And whereas, the Wilmington City Council is deeply committed to protecting homes and businesses and preserving the city's historic character while ensuring infrastructure solutions that are financially responsible and meet transportation and navigational needs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wilmington City Council urges the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the United States Coast Guard, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers to fully utilize avoidance and minimization measures and explore, explore all practical alternatives to prevent negative impacts to homes, businesses, and historic structures in their decision-making process and funding allocations. And then these copies of this resolution will be transmitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the United States Coast Guard, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and other relevant stakeholders. Now, what I asked yesterday at the meeting is, how did we come to sixty-five foot, a hundred foot, and a hundred and thirty-five foot? I was reading through some of the minutes. I was asking the questions from the department. I was asking these questions from our MPO. And one of the things that came forward, and I was sharing this earlier, I think it was Silet, before we came to the meeting, was the fact that on the meeting, I believe that it was on April the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, there was a huge meeting of, and the meeting attendees are here on record, where the note came from, based on comments received from SHIPO, a plus or minus thirty-five vertical clearance range was added to the alternative C, one hundred fixed alternative on the CP two signature form to clarify that the one-hundred-foot fixed vertical clearance is for study comparison and for final vertical clearance will be determined by the United States Army Corps of Engineers and the United States Coast Guard. So we were talking today about why that was put in there. What was the need for that number to include that, that, that amount of space? Their indication is that they may have to move this road to try to mitigate any kind of structures that they have to move this structure through. They may have to turn the road, they may have to raise the height, they may have to lower the height. It may be a hundred and seven, it may be a hundred and eight, it may be right at a hundred. But they have to have an understanding to see where they can adjust the height when necessary, and possibly with a longer ramp going back toward Leland because of the amount of space between Leland and Wilmington. There's about two, two miles on that causeway, if not longer. So that was the reason that SHIPO included that verbiage in there, understanding that they do want the hundred-foot or pushing the one-hundred-foot vertical clearance, but with the caveat that there may be an adjustment necessary to make that happen. Now, if they come forward in the United States Coast Guard or the United States Army Corps of Engineers... Corps of Engineers says 135, then I believe there's much more bites at this apple to determine, we're saying to them, we're trying to minimize the impacts to this community. And you're putting more of that impact on us than any other community in the, in, in the state than I'm, I believe, that I see that is happening around the state. So that's part of this resolution is to try to hopefully mimic what Councilmember Andrews has done, but also to support SHIPO's issue in respect to making the adjustment, if necessary, to make this a reality. In addition to that, I wanted to also know about all of the traffic moving north. We see that there's been very little traffic from some of the things that have been sent to us in respect to the amount of ship traffic that has been moving north. What I found today, when we were, I was asking some of our, our staff on GIS as to how many properties are north of the bridge, and it surprised me a little bit, and I could understand why some of this is going into the discussion because what we see north of the bridge is industrial property of Industrial One at 73 acres, LI at 33 acres, and I Two at 898 acres. So there's about 1,000 acres of land that is north of the memorial. Now, some of that is being used currently, some of it is, is still vacant, but some of it will be redeveloped. So I'm sure that part of this process to study what happens north of the bridge would take some of this property or all this property into consideration because whatever happens with the memorial, if ship traffic cannot move up north, there will have to be some mitigation process with the state of North Carolina to either purchase those properties and/or mitigate those losses of people being able to develop these properties for industrial use because of the fact that you cannot get but a some, some, a one-size level of ship up north. That's where we could possibly drive up the cost of this that I see from the state. This is just my perspective on it, is what I think that would happen with the state of North Carolina. I'm sure we'd be looking at these conditions possibly moving north. On the right-hand side, there's very little property, most of it is zone residential, except as you get up toward the Castle Hayne area, you'll see that there's an I Two Properties up in that area, but there's not much left up that way on the right-hand side. So all of these things are going to be taken into consideration, including what it would cost to deepen it, if you did deepen it, because it has not been deepened, from what I understand, for about 15 years. And I think that going up to the bridge is about 38 feet. You have the turning base in there. So I'm sure that will be put into consideration when they're determining this. So there's a lot of moving parts of this. This thing is going to take, I believe, about five years just to get through. And I think we should give the opportunity to SHIPO and the state to see what they're going to come back with and what they're going to tell us. But the impacts to, to this community would be significant at the 135. I agree 100% with everybody here. So I would support the SHIPO's position and give the state and give everybody involved in this the opportunity to see what this is going to shake out to look like because we do have some time here. And I don't, that's, that's, that's a resolution that I would do want to put forward.
Mr. Mayor. Another point of order here for the, so, so there's a substitute resolution that was put forward in motion, and then we have another substitute resolution that was, that, that takes precedence.
So first, we would need to ask, was, is there a second to?
The original.
Councilperson Andrews, yes, substitute motion. And then if so, then we need to vote on that first, up or down. And then if that fails, then it refers back to the original motion, and then we go to the mayor's motion and see if that has a second.
Thank you.
Or do we have a, okay, Mr. Spears?
So I just want to say that I totally get what Councilwoman Andrews is doing in being the spokesperson for our citizens as it relates to the impact of their community. But not just your community, other communities within this range of impact is what I'll call it. But I hate to see, this is politics at its finest being played here right in front of our faces. And I hate the fact that we have funding that is potentially in limbo now because you're voicing your concerns, you've had someone to take up the mantle for voicing your concerns. Because I think when we serve in these positions of public service, most people will, up until lately, intend to do a great job for the public, not, not to oppress or, or to take away things from, from the general public. So I, I hate to see that. I hate to see that occurring with this because the bridge is needed. The North Carolina Department of Transportation said that the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge is functionally obsolete. And I don't know, last year, year before, you know, the, the impression was given, even I thought of like, man, you're driving across the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge and you might drop into the Cape Fear. And it's not funny, but it's just how outlandish it was and, and how we got to this point. And, and I, I, I don't like being at this point now where we're all in a frenzy. We're all in a frenzy. The, the, the mayor just said it, it's at least five years before they finalize anything concerning this bridge. So there are a lot of decisions that need to be made. There are a lot of moving parts that are going to take place right now. And I, I wish Councilwoman Andrews would have got a consensus from the rest of the council. I said that yesterday, but I think you, you all couldn't hear me very clearly. But I would have loved to have a conversation about this because I do see your point. And again, I, I hate that it's, it's being put in limbo because you're being vocal and, and people are being vocal about it. But, you know, I don't want to throw it off. I definitely don't want to throw it off. I don't want you to feel like you're not supported. I don't want you all to feel like you're not supported. I don't even want the people that are not here to feel as if they're not supported in the decision-making or the, the magnitude of the impact of, of this bridge. So I, I, I just think that, I, I wanted to say that for everybody to, to understand, no matter what comes about from tonight. And, I mean, I don't know, most of us will be really old when the bridge comes up anyway. So, I mean, it'll be for future generations. But I just wanted to put that information out there and let you all know that you're being heard and, and to also say to you, Celeste, that, you know, you, you're not alone on this thing and, and we support you. I just, I wish we would have had a little conversation about it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Joyner?
Just wanted to share with folks that I went ahead and submitted my own comments to the Army Corps of Engineer, Army Corps of Engineers because the deadline for public comments, I understood, was yesterday, but I know folks have, have spoken tonight and said that there was a meeting in which maybe comments will continue to be received. So I would just encourage anybody, if you have feedback, please provide that to them. But it really caused me to dig in deeper and say, why do we have so many of these different touchpoints where nobody seems to actually know what step in the process we're at? Who is the decision-maker that we're providing comments in so many different directions? And so I invite you to, I, I copied a couple of folks on the email. I invite you to take a look at the comments that I submitted. If you don't have access to it, send me an email and I'll be happy to forward it to you. But I tried to frame it as a matter of support for the 100-foot option, Alternative C, and I know that even 100-foot is a misnomer in some ways, as to what the arguments for that were as opposed to what the arguments against other alternatives were. Because my frustration, and I think that every single person from every single vantage point in the city of Wilmington is frustrated with what Mr. Spears accurately described as the politics that's being played with this. The frustration of, we're called to advocate for the people who live in our city. We have folks who are literally saying that they fear that their homes are in jeopardy and somehow a game is going to be played with funds that have already been allocated. Democrats and Republicans have worked to get those funds and now they're in jeopardy because we're trying to do our job of advocating. So I would be in favor of what the mayor described moving forward, but I would be happy to share the comments that I shared with the court with anybody who's interested.
Yeah. I also, I mean, echoing a lot of the stuff we're, we're hearing here, I recognize and appreciate the concern and, and the passion from specifically the folks in the Historic District. You guys have a wonderful ability to articulate the needs of your community that I wish everyone in our community was able to do. I've owned a historic home in Wilmington. I currently live in the Historic District with, with my, with my family. I remain opposed to the original resolution primarily due to some of the inaccuracies that were portrayed in it. Many of those were, were litigated in our agenda briefing yesterday and, and throughout the public discourse, so I don't feel the need to rehash them all. But also the risk that it, that it really presents to a lot of the work that's been done in funding the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge replacement. There was an article that dropped in Port City Daily, I, I guess while we were meeting. It says, "NC DOT says $242 million Cape Fear Memorial Bridge Grant paused as Wilmington Council set to vote on the 100-foot resolution." While I highly doubt that this headline is, it's not tied to the decision that we're, you know, contemplating this evening, there's a lot of larger decision-making happening in the zeitgeist of the federal government and the, and the state government. It, it does reinforce some of the fears that I've articulated, that shifting our position from the resolution of support that we did just last year when NC DOT made their application that resulted in the $242 million and, and then the $85 million in the, in the, in the state, the draft State Transportation Improvement Program, I'm not good at math, but that's close to $400 million, could and likely would result in the loss of some or all of that federal and state funding that we, that we should receive. Were to lose this funding, then regardless of the height, 65, 100, 110, 135, regardless of that funding or the height, the tolling would likely be the only way to fund the replacement of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. So I think we've, we've found a good, a good way to advocate our position for the, for the people that we represent and, and what the mayor has proposed, and I, I also would support that.
When I, when I heard about like the 100, 100 feet and then the 135 and then the 65, you know, I got really confused because they didn't give us all of those options at the very beginning. One of the things that I, that I've been looking at as I've listened to both sides is I don't want to put us in a position where your hands are tied so because you say, I want it this way and not any of the other ways. I, I like the mayor's position in the sense that we do hear your, we do hear your cry, your cry. We do understand you. One of my best friends is, is the guy that owns the Davis Funeral Home, okay? And so I hear your passion and I hear what you're saying. And I, and I do hope that as we decide tonight, that, that, that you hear us say, we want to make sure that they do the best for the people that are being affected by this, okay? And there's so many, there's so much still out there. We don't know whether or not it's going to be 100 feet, 135, 65, you know, there's still a lot of studying to do. So I didn't, I wouldn't want to just tie our hands to just one option.
Mr. [inaudible].
I was on the NPO before Luke or Kevin was on it, when we were, when we were studying the 12 alternatives that were given us for the Skyline Bridge. And we went into it and one of them was, I think number 11 was the, the one that we're here tonight discussing. It never even, it never made any cut because we settled on the, the, the alternative that was coming across the river and hitting about where Independence Boulevard is. Because I remember when Worcester Street was a street just like Dock, Anne, Orange, Queen, all of those. It was just a little narrow two-lane street. Everybody had yards. And if you go down Worcester, it's not like that anymore. And on Dawson Street from the Brigade Boys Club, which is now a county-owned building all the way up to beyond the bridge, was houses. Over on South Front Street, there were houses. My grandparents lived in one. All that got bulldozed, so I know what you're talking about. I, I remember that. I mean, we're talking about the middle 60s, middle to late 60s before the bridge was actually built. So I know what you're talking about, albeit those houses that I just described were not the grand homes like you all have, but it was somebody's home that they built and raised their family in. So I understand your angst, but that didn't stop that memorial bridge from being built. And we probably shouldn't have had an elevator bridge put in in the first place then, and it probably wouldn't land where it lands now. So anyway, I think that this is a good, I think this is a good middle, if you will, compromise. So my two cents worth, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Andrews?
Ms. Mayor, it, it seems like I don't have a second for my motion, so it seems like it, it has died. So I would like to withdraw it and, and let you move for yours or let me move for yours.
Okay, either which one?
So I, I just wanted to move the, the mayor's substitute resolution.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Okay. This concludes the regular agenda. Are there any others to be brought forward by our city attorney?
Yes, sir, we have a brief closed session.
Okay, city manager. Adam Clark? Mr. Joyner? Waddell?
With May, March being Women's Month, I mentioned earlier about the commercial where they talk about little kids who at, at three can run everywhere and do all kinds of things. But then later on, when they become teenagers, they lose that enthusiasm. One of the challenges I've given my kids at my church is I will be calling them every, throughout the, the month of March, and I'll ask them one question. I'll say, "How are you?" And their response is to be, "I am fearfully and wonderfully made." I am fearfully and wonderfully made. And I think that that would maybe a good, a good response for all of us as we go through the next challenges this month and prepare for the litten season and all. Just the idea to keep, be mindful of the fact that no matter what's going on around me, I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Randborg. Ms. Andrews?
Happy Mardi Gras. And I'm wearing pink, not just to be festive, but this morning we had a ceremony right here in this room with the Cape Fear Garden Club. And this is my jacket I wear with the garden club. And the city has received a designation from the National Wildlife Federation as a certified wildlife habitat community, which took a lot of work from the garden club, and we really appreciate that. And I just wanted to mention that and congratulations to Wilmington.
Ms. Spears?
Yes, sir. I want to thank Snipes Academy, the Wilmington Schools of the, Wilmington School of the Arts for asking me to come out last month and, and read to their students for Black History Month. I was also invited to speak to the state program at my alma mater, Hargit High School, which happens to be the greatest high school in the county. And really pleased to be able to spend some time with these students and read to these students and, and show them an example of a, a positive role model and somebody who cares about them in this community. And one more thing I was, so, so thank you to all the students and all the teachers and the invitations. I, I just so happened the other day clicked on a, a, a popular, I guess I'll say he's popular, conservative radio host the other day who was talking about the DEI initiatives and, and how grateful and, and happy he was to see what I'll call, I'll call an attack on diversity, equity, and inclusion in, in our nation right now. But he didn't provide any facts as to the wrongings of, of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think people have to open their mind as to what the- And I think people have to open their mind as to what diversity, equity, and inclusion is. It's not just, of course, you know, it's not just about black people, it's about, it's about diverse, a diverse group of people, it's about being welcoming, it's about presenting opportunities for people. And so I am really displeased with where we're going in this country. It seems that we're going backwards, and we should be going forward in 2025. So I'll be a part of every initiative to keep diversity, equity, and inclusion alive, not only in this nation, but especially in the city of Wilmington, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to enter the closed session pursuant to the provisions of General Statute 143-318, Point 11A and 3, in order for the city council to, one, consult with and provide instruction to the city attorney regarding potential legal claims, including the case of Hun versus the City of Wilmington, File Number 23CVS3597. And I will also note that this closed session will be held in council chambers, and I will ask for everyone to leave the chambers at this time. At the end of the closed session, council will reopen its public section, public session in this room. So we have a motion made by Councilmember Andrews, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We are now going into closed session.